Let's call the City and Marine City Commission meeting to order March 1st, 2018, 7:00 PM. Can we please stand for a prayer?
Pastor Duroy is 25 miles away in a snowstorm, so he sent me a prayer for us. In 2 Corinthians, we read, "As we work together with Christ, we urge ourselves to accept the grace of God." And he says, "At an acceptable time, I have listened to you, and now you must listen to me." Let us pray. God of heaven and earth, your wisdom stretches around the world, ordering all things for good. Free us from anxiety and understand us like a friend, that we might share the good news of your friendship with all people through the word made flesh, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
And the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Van Cosh.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Present.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Luckley.
Present.
Commissioner Simpson has asked us this evening. Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City manager Lott. Here.
Can I get a motion to excuse Dave Simpson, please?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Can I get a motion for communication to be received and filed from the Planning Commission regular meeting, January 8th, Tifa regular meeting, January 16th, the Davis Kirksey February report, and the Planning Commission annual report 2017?
I move the acceptance of the communications from the Planning Commission, the Tifa regular meeting, the Davis Kirksey Associates, and the Planning Commission annual report.
Support. Any questions or concerns on communications?
I had been in communication with Dave Simpson, and he just wanted to express his concern about the report from Linda Davis Kirksey with the teen rec zone. He stated that she hasn't really met with them since last September, and that it's actually a $30,000 patronicity match that they're working on. He just wanted that clarified.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Mr. Haas.
The last two, three pleasant, King Harold. But things, I'd like to thank Lisa Hendricks for giving a good explanation. So the Friends of City Hall have been lobbying, the Friends of City Hall have their Heritage Day museum, and then lobbying themselves for some money. That's real good for the people of Marine City. You know, I've got people out there that still don't understand, had a guy at Steve Ball comments to one of the Post. You know, the recalled commission looked a lot better than the recall of the commission we got now. You know, Mr. Turner's part of that recall commission. Recalled mayor's wife sitting right there. You know, Friends of City Hall. You know, it's amazing how one man who's done passed away got this town to hopping, yet we can't even get good sidewalks from slum lords for low-income people, for elderly people, for single parents with kids. It's part of the side of their rent-ness. This is their business. You're allowing a substandard business, substandard housing. I done walked my section of town, the 0% homestead. You take care of the corners and all those people who are making money off of that, look a whole lot better. Reason Marine City was never developed is because of our garbage sidewalks, because of no money. The treasurer's been around 20 years, never really had an input, got her daughter a job. You know, had, you know, oh, shake your head, I know, Mr. Avery, it's a damn shame. You know, it's just amazing. 20 years, we had Georgia Palin, and Georgia Palin, you know, trailer park's overflowing. She's on the corner of King and Charter now. Maybe if people spoke up, you know, it's Cotterville Township, you know, speak up, maybe we'll have a couple of dead people by the end of next meeting or whatever. You know, you gotta tell it. You don't tell the people where it's at, people don't pay attention, people don't look. You know, what else is that? King and Charter. Yeah, elementary school, a couple blocks the other way, the high school. You know, when is Marine City gonna start slamming the Cotterville Township crew? Spends the money. Let's put the undercovers in there. You know, not gonna waste our time with Jim Heslop and our boys, that's not our property. You know, now everyone wants to sit here and look stupid, you know, it just amazes me. Friends of City Hall lobbying themselves. Actually, so Friends of City Hall would actually, because, you know, as far as 20-some years I've been here, it's always been the St. Mark's festival. So somehow it went from St. Mark's, so St. Mark's would probably give a release form to the Friends of City Hall, I imagine. Because, I mean, if it's their festival, why would they just let it go without having at least a release form? And like I say, it's amazing. I came for Dave Simpson tonight, you know, being he's a East China School District, works for him, supposed to be representative of him, you know, a few things. I had an incident at the school. I had words with Mr. Simpson about that a year ago. You think, hey, someone who's on the city, if he tells me something, hey, we just, you know, it's like doing your job, you know? What I do in the mold business, someone comes with a number, boom, yeah, I remember, you gotta do this, that, and the other thing. You know, you tell people things that they should be able to remember and periodically check in. It's a tragic thing. But like I said, this is amazing, you know, can't even get sidewalks for the elderly, you know, it's a business. Hell, we got one now. You know, as I look, you know, it's not public information, St. Clair County, you can look up anybody on the court search, you know, wanna know who lives next to ya. It's amazing how someone can look up my address, 100% homestead, yeah, Bill House must live there. But yet I got a 0% homestead, I don't know what kind of predator lives there, what kind of meth head lives there, I don't know nothing. Where's Mike? You know, you're gonna let this slum lord rent these properties, but yet it puts a real homeowner at disadvantage, almost like we've been seeing with the water street in the neighborhoods. Telling ya. I'm much calmer not having to come here and talk, but you can only deal with stupidity for so long. Like I say, I don't want friends, I ain't looking for big-money jobs, you know, I'm who I am. What you see is what you get. I ain't trying to be nobody, except take care of my neighborhoods.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, moving on to the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with an addition on 10C for a resolution?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda with the addition of item 10C. Support?
Motion, support. Any questions on the agenda? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approval of the City Commission regular meeting minutes, February 15th.
I move the approval of the City Commission minutes from February 15th, 2018.
I will support that.
Any questions on the minutes, corrections or deletions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I need approval for the City Commission closed session meeting minutes, February 15th.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Commission closed session meeting minutes of February 15th.
Support.
Any questions on those, or deletions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Need approval for the consent agenda? No, we have nothing.
We don't have anything.
Moving on to unfinished business. Historical Society Maritime Mosaics.
Heather Bauchram, 6294 River Road, East China. I have some handouts for everybody. I'm sorry you didn't get this ahead of time, but I didn't have it all together. Plus, I wanted you to have the color, and I know you're not going to make a decision tonight. Just wanted your...
Hold Heather.
Yeah. Okay, I thought it was over, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, as you know from what was in your package, which I understand isn't very much, that we have a change in our plans, and changing the focus to be on the mosaics. We have received, I'm gonna have to push this down a bit, so I can't see you. We have received some very nice donations for this. We've also had another grant from the Blue Water Arts Committee through the Community Foundation. And while I'd love to see the maze, the Mariners' maze completed, realistically, we would need quite a bit more money to finish that. And I don't like the idea of starting a project that can't be finished. I want something finished in my lifetime, so, and I'm getting older. Anyway, we met with, some of the Historical Society members met with some of the major donors, and they said, "You know, our main interest is the history that is in the pictures that are going to be for the mosaics. Those are all ships built in Marine City. And that is where our interest lies, and if you will focus on that alone, then we will give you the money you need to complete this." And this made me feel a lot more comfortable with the project, because the whole idea of this was to promote the history of Marine City. I mean, I don't know whether some of the young people or people coming into this community know the importance of this small community, that back in the 1800s, it was one of the biggest shipbuilding places on the Great Lakes. And I think it was like 255 ships were built, on the different places on the Bell River and some on the Main River. So these are all ships that were built in Marine City. We chose ones that show different aspects of the building. We only had one good picture of a clipper, and all of these were very difficult even to see. So what we did was, I did that little handout that I gave you, after the first page, there's a photograph of some of the very small things that they have up in St. Clair, along Clinton, is it Clinton Road? I think it's Road. These are quite small, but they have some tile work that they've done on top, and I really like how that's done, and this is the aggregate cement around the outside. These are made by putting in footings, so that they're very stable, they're very heavy, nobody can pick them up and walk away very easily. The next couple of pages, three pages, are out the parks and photo areas and other market axes where we could put the mosaics on the platforms. The one thing I didn't mention is the size. The size are, and that's why I did this, this is approximately the actual size. It probably will be a couple of inches higher, because we want to make sure there's plenty of room for putting the bronze plates in. Now, the bronze plate at the bottom will have, this is just very brief, a description and the name of the ship. And then up here, because we got a grant from the Community Foundation, this is their logo, and this will be in bronze, too. The mosaic and the bronze plates will be recessed, so that everything is level. And we thought that the best way to do it would be to put them in areas that are already landscaped, if possible. That way, they're not in the way of cutting the grass, and we won't, we will not disturb what's already there. So the only park, well, actually, there are a couple of parks where there is no landscaping. So if we're going to put some in those parks, we could create a small landscape area with a couple, maybe three low-growing shrubs behind the platform of the mosaics. The biggest, the park with the greatest concern was Nautilus Park, because so much goes on there. And so we tried to find areas where they wouldn't have tent, poles, or whatever is required, all the paraphernalia that go in with that. So to keep them in areas that are unlikely to interfere with anything that would be going on in the park. We think that these would be very beautiful in the glass mosaics. Glass is the least porous thing we can use, and I have done a lot of research and gotten a lot of information on how these will be put into the cement. They have to go on a cement board. We use a thin set for the adhering substance. The thin set also is used for the grouting in the mosaic itself. And what we've done is we have sent away for the very first one to be made, because we want to look at it and see that it's what we want, and that the artist is creating the glass mosaic, that it's, you know, of the quality that we would want. We have enough funds to do all of the mosaics and to do the platforms, we think, for all of them. Now, if we don't have enough for all of them, we know for sure that we can do all of the, create all of the mosaics, create a minimum of five of the platforms, possibly six. If we need to raise some more money, we will do it. To finish, there are only eight, that's the total. The Historical Society will be the group that will fund this entirely, and any restoration that needs to be done, we would be responsible for. We will also, the sealant is very important, that goes on top of these, and we will be responsible for putting that on twice a year, to maintain the integrity of the piece. So I know you'll want to think about this, and I don't need to have an answer tonight, but does anybody have any questions? I may have forgotten to tell you something.
Okay, so that's your total size, what is it, about three and a half by four and a half, or roughly?
It is. I can tell you exactly. It is 52 inches, and it will be 36. This is closer to 33 high.
Okay.
And...
And how thick?
Well, when I looked at the ones in St. Clair, the elevation in the front, which is the lowest part, is a little over a foot.
Okay.
And then because ours are bigger, they'll be, it'll be higher at the back.
Okay.
So, and there'll be quite a cost to us, you know, for the platforms. These have to be well-made, very sturdy, and we're getting quotes on this.
I guess on the park locations, I guess I'd like to see a park map more with, I can figure out most of these, but...
Yeah, what I can do is, I have the, these were the blowups of different areas. I do have the original photographs, I can get those to you and just, they could be maybe...
Well, I was looking at, like, here's the park, and here's the locations. See what I'm saying?
Yes.
Instead of just...
Do we have, do we have maps of the park?
You might have some, don't you? We can always use it off the Internet.
Go to Google Maps.
Yeah, we can go to Google Maps and get that.
Okay.
Put them, place them on an aerial.
Okay, I hope I can...
I wouldn't be able to figure that out either.
It's not that, it's not that.
Sounded good.
Because I know, even in the Nautilus Park, I know you got it to one end, but the Boy Scouts do their car show night in there, and they use that aerial over there.
Now, this is where...
For parking cars.
Right, and we wouldn't want to be in the way of that, that's for sure. Would the area...
Well, that's what I'm saying, I almost think that it needs to be looked at, studied, maybe Mike can look more at some of those things, and then he can help you with the aerials on those maps to try to figure out the best location.
While this looks on the lap, I think it's the last page, this looks like a large area between the trees. It actually is not very big. I'd be surprised if a car found good parts in there, but of course you never know.
You'd be surprised.
It looks like something tied to park itself back there.
Yeah.
That van, I'm horrified.
Oh, that was a, they did training. The firemen did training on that. They chop it up for training.
The last page, I had the last park chopped off.
Well, that's with the park where the...
What's that?
I have another one here, I can give you...
Next is Beaton's.
Okay, Watchman Park. Yeah, I was just hoping we didn't ignore Watchman Park, because it seems to...
No, I have that one in there.
Okay.
And again, that would be one where we would probably have to put a little landscaping. And the park that the Marines, the Marine City Civic Women's Club belong to, they take care of it. The one area that's landscaped that would be good for this, it's really far down by the water and kinda secluded, and the only thing I worry about there is that maybe it is a little too secluded for dizzy little hands that might think it's fun to...
Well, that one's also, we've used that as the area for the beer tent, too, so...
Right down in the Civic Women's Club area?
Isn't that...
Yeah, that's where you have the beer garden, and then they put the stages in the back.
Okay, now, there is a landscape area there.
Is this the one with the little snow pile?
Yes.
Yeah, that's in that corner.
And that, it would, one would fit nicely there. Yeah. And, you know, I've already talked to the garden club, you know, and they're fine with where we might put these, and we want everybody to be happy about it. You know, and it's something that I think will add to the park, not take away from it. And I love the fact that these were built in Marine City, it's incredible.
What's the total cost of your whole project? Do you have a figure, estimate?
It depends on what platforms eventually will be. It's anywhere between 36,000 to 40,000. That's the maximum.
Okay.
Yeah. And we are, we're close to the lower figure.
And you're not doing anything down by the beach, you're just doing that way?
No, I don't think that would be a great area, do you?
Well, where the pavilion is, I don't know if that would be a...
Yeah, the pavilion, I mean, that's a statement on its own.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, we could put one down there, depends what people like.
Well, it's something to look at, I don't know, I'm just, you know. When people rent it...
But the beach itself, of course, that's a park, one of our parks, isn't it? Considered a college, that would be a good area.
Heather, these are made up of pieces of mosaic glass? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm sorry.
They're made up, they're mosaics?
Yes, yes.
Small pieces of glass that are put together? And then you put some type of sealer?
Yes.
Okay.
The way you adhere it, first of all, to the platform, has to be very carefully done, and our group are going to be, and if anybody wants to help, they're more than welcome, we'll be actually laying it in to the cement at the right time. And then, then there's a curing period, I mean, it's very particular how this is done. Then the thin set is used over the surface of the glass mosaic, and then you clean off that surface once, you know, you get it all in there. And that acts as your grout, and that is what they recommend the best. And they recommend specific sealers to go over this.
My only concern is kids tagging these things, or hitting them with spray paint or something. Are you gonna be able to clean it?
I suppose we can clean spray paint.
Yeah.
I might run after them with the spray paint myself. You know, we can only hope that they will appreciate that it's something not to do that to...
I certainly hope it never happens.
I know. And, you know, the thing that impressed me was that, Drake Park, that big anchor that was there, it was constantly covered in graffiti. And when the Historical Society decided we would take care of that park, we put planting around it, and Cheryl Zimmer herself painted it, and nobody has put anything on it since. So maybe our kids aren't so bad.
Yeah, it's not usual.
Thanks.
Okay.
So will you come back to us, then, with a location and everything like that?
Yeah, I will do that, that'll...
And then Mike would be a good resource from that, for what's happening in each one of the parks.
Okay.
I know there's stuff with the Girl Scouts in Nautical, and I don't know exactly, I couldn't remember exactly where they're at in there, the whole park.
Yeah.
And we don't want to get in the way of the rip tasting, either.
And that's why it's nice to be able to do it in a landscaped area, if possible, because then they avoid that, you know?
I think this is a better idea, honestly, than what you guys had originally put up.
Yeah.
Well, because it gets spread out through the whole city.
Right. And it can be in most of the downtown parks. I really, I really like this, and I was very, very appreciative of the people who said, "Look, you know, think about this." And I didn't have to think about it more than about one second, and I said, "You're right."
I'm kinda wondering, even this one you have, it's, I know that's the Broadway Park.
Yeah.
And the bad thing is, is there were some plantings that got put in front of that sign that are way too tall, so it covers up our sign.
Yeah, they've been talking about that.
And I'm kinda thinking, instead of behind it, why don't you get rid of those and...
I don't know whether you want me to do that or not, but...
You can work that out with Mike. I mean, you know, it's, nobody can see that sign now, and then you could put that right in front, I'm sure there's enough room to put that right in front of it, that...
I know that they're planning on taking those out, I think they're putting smaller ones in, so I don't want to...
Well, that's still up to...
We can work it out.
Yeah, we will. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the Friends of City Hall lease of 300 Broadway. Moving on to the Friends of City Hall lease of three hundred Broadway.
Commissioner, we revised the lease in accordance with the last comments, um, made at the last meeting. And, uh, lease was resubmitted to administration who I think submitted it to the Friends of City Hall. Um, we did get some comments back that, um, could be categorized as not accepting the terms of this lease, but I know, I think there's people here to speak on that.
Judy Wyatt, eighty-seven fifty-seven Anchor Bay Drive. We asked if the waiting period be extended from sixty to ninety days, uh, just because sometimes banks are slow. And this is the portion that talks about a potential sale. And if, if we make, you know, an offer, we didn't know if we could get that through in sixty days. And, uh, then the second request was, um, in reference to, um, trying to think, what was it in reference to? Uh, again, the sale issue. And, um, we were concerned that we would make an investment into the building and put fifty or a hundred thousand into the building and then the city would be approached by a potential buyer. And, um, we wanted a compensation for what we had, uh, invested, that we could demonstrate that we had invested in the building. And then also, if we were to be the buyer, if that investment could be deducted from the asking price so that we didn't pay for it twice. And that language or that intent was either in one of the very first written versions or it was verbally discussed when I was in a meeting with Elaine. And, uh, I looked for it in this version, didn't find it and would like that concept. Everything else is very acceptable. If you are unwilling to do the ninety days, we can live with that. If, that's just a nicety. But I think, I think the protection of our investment is important to us, seeing as we're going to be spending such a significant amount of money over time.
The sixty to ninety is in paragraph twenty-five. That's not a major issue.
Okay.
That's, um, I don't have an issue with that. I, I think the departure here is, there was a, there was a concept that we had presented, um, early on on a discussion draft that tried to give some credit towards the, um, the amount of money spent enhancing the building towards the end purchase price. Then I, I think the commission did not want to go in that direction and that draft was revised into this draft. So, that concept isn't in there. What's in there is the fair market price at the end of the lease term. And, and/or the match of a right of first refusal in paragraph twenty-five. So, if during the term of the lease, the city were to get an offer on the building, um, the Friends of City Hall would have ninety days, um, sixty changing to ninety, I think that's a rational change, um, to match that offer and step into the shoes of that, of that purchase arrangement. Also, at the end of the lease, um, they have the right to purchase the, um, property for the fair market price determined by appraisers for, um, one year. They have the right within a whole year to do it at the end of the lease, under the terms of this agreement, so... The departure between the parties, to succinctly put it, is the value of the contributions during the lease term. I think the Friends of City Hall want to get credit against any sale of the land or any purchase of the land by the Friends of City Hall at any time for the value of the investment made in the building.
One question on that, though. You improved the building to help save the building. You know, the money's invested into the building.
Yes.
And you want credit back if we were to sell it. What would that money, maybe grant money that you'd be receiving back? What would it?
Some of it would be grant money, some of it would be donation money, uh, major donors, minor donors. We make money a variety of ways. But of course, some of the big checks are a few major donors and, uh, foundation grants.
But if that money is to go back to you and the building is sold, the, the whole idea belonging to five oh one three C about the saving of the building, that the charity's actually completed its project if it's restored. So, if you put that money back into your funds, I don't...
I suspect what would happen, and this is already in our business plan, is that would, that would go into a foundation which we intend to create. And that purpose of that foundation is to, um, literally take care of City Hall in perpetuity as a, as a management fund for that building. So, that's probably what would happen.
But if the building was sold, there would, it would be then private or in another organization.
Well...
And how would you, you would have to then refund grant money? Because if the grant money was spent and then you've received money back for it, I don't see how...
Well, certainly, you know, the money that gets invested is, it comes from a variety of sources and we know those sources and we know those amounts. So, if there was a difficulty in your mind about, you know, returning grant money to us, we could eliminate that and go strictly toward the donation money and other monies that we earn, uh, in a variety of ways.
But that was donated to restore that building and it is to restore the building? Any other questions from the board?
You can't greed, uh, take my, for a charity and use it on something else. You have to use it on what you're raising it for.
Right.
And on the other note, I had on it was that last week we went over choices for, for a location for City Hall, a new City Hall. Is, is this still on the agenda?
No, we took that off the choices. No, it wasn't on. Lisa, you had a question?
All right, I gotta... Let me make an observation. I think the issue of whether somebody's gonna come and try to buy the building is pretty small and pretty unlikely. So, I, I, I don't feel like we need to debate this to death.
Okay.
I think it, we're splitting hairs to talk about it. It was raised in a discussion that we had in Elaine's office a couple of months ago. It was probably me that was stirring the pot, pardon me.
No, it was, it was definitely a concept and it was in a discussion draft.
Yeah.
And I think, I think you, you did raise it and it was just looking for a credit...
Yeah.
Against the investment. And that, and we did discuss it, yes?
Yeah.
Separate from this, that seems to be a separate thing to me. If somebody's trying to buy the building or, or the group is trying to buy the building, couldn't that be negotiated at that time? Like, you know, talked over at that, I mean, it, it doesn't necessarily need to be a part of the lease from the city's perspective.
I certainly think that's an approach that I, I would support. I would, let me also say, for my personal bottom line with this, I'm, I can live with the lease exactly as it's written right now without any changes.
Well, well, I never have anyone say that. I don't even know how to respond to that. No, I understand, and I understand your point, uh, it's, when you, do you believe during the, the lease term, there's not gonna be a whole bunch of people banging on a door to buy it?
I don't know.
So, let's presume the lease term runs. You have then a year to buy it. What I think Ms. Lovely is saying is that you could negotiate your purchase price at that time to help offset these figures.
Yeah, okay.
And it could be negotiated at that point. I think that's the point you're making. So, it really doesn't have to be part of the lease. Is that correct?
That's correct. I, I just want to say something. It's interesting to me that, uh, some people have kind of got the cart before the horse with Friends of City Hall. Fifteen years ago, we were told that the best thing for the city to do was to lease the building. And, um, I was a part of that and that was before Friends of City Hall was ever even thought of. And they sent me to a whole bunch of, uh, things. Uh, this is an interesting one you can download. Measuring Economic Impacts of Historic Preservation: Feasibility Assessment Manual for Reusing Historic Buildings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And went, went to all those. For our side of it, you know, what is best for the city, uh, is where I'm coming from. And, uh, they'll have to deal with their part of it. So, um, my whole thing is I would move that we accept the lease with the ninety days put in. I mean, what more can we ask than to have a group of people pouring their money into a building that we own, uh, for the benefit of the city?
Lisa?
All right, I got a couple things. Um...
Is that a motion?
That was, yeah.
Okay, hold on.
I'd support that.
All right, ready?
We got a motion support, so.
All right, um, I read through the, first I'd like to know, are you guys gonna supply us with some financial reports for the Friends of City Hall? Are you gonna give us any financial reports for the Friends of City Hall? I'd like to see some, do you have money? Do you have any resources so far?
Financial reports were...
For your...
Uh, yes, so we have a number of them. We have an annual report, we have bank statements, we have our nine ninety. They're all part of, um, the grant application that we're submitting.
Can some of that be provided to us so I can see that there's money there? I mean...
Absolutely.
Um, another thing is, is, um, when you lease this, I, I know in your business plan you have all these prices of, of what you're gonna charge for things, but how are you, you have to repair the building first.
Yes.
So, what's the plan for that? All I saw was just the word grant in the business plan and not even what grant or how.
Um, we have, um, approximately thirty-two thousand dollars that we're going to use to fix the staircase. That is the, um, price that we've been given for doing it. So, we have that money in the bank. Uh, we are going for a grant for approximately fifty thousand dollars. We have met with contractors who are doing drawings that will be finished in another week or so. Um, we have, um, approximately thirty-six thousand dollars in the bank in addition to the, um, thirty-two that I mentioned for the stairs. And hopefully a fifty that we'll get from, um, Community Foundation.
So, is the majority of that just to finish the first floor?
Exactly.
Okay. So, how did...
And, uh, let me, let me just clarify a few things about that. We can't even do that textbook perfect with even that amount of money on the first floor. What we can do is demo all the old stuff that's in there in the sixties and the seventies. We can take it back to the brick. And we know that we can put in some toilets that will be ADA accessible and suitable to the number of people that are gonna use the room. We can probably refinish the floors. We can probably do something about the ceiling. But it is not going to be a picture-perfect restoration. It cannot be. That is extraordinarily expensive to get to that. So, we want to get something clean, warm, dry, and usable, painted as well.
Okay, so, how are you gonna make the, that first floor ADA accessible since the ramp was removed?
We are probably going to use a porch lift to get people from the doorway up to the main floor level, which is about four feet, four and a half feet above grade.
Okay. So, eventually, River Rec Teenstone stays in there, that's your area that, one of the part, their area's...
There's a common area that Teen Rec and we are sharing.
Yep, I'm not talking about that.
Okay.
I'm talking about when you get further on in the program and you, or if you're still talking about an elevator, are we still talking elevator here? Their area was where the elevator was gonna go. So, how would that even be possible?
That's one possibility, yes. And, um, that's several years down the road.
Okay, so you're gonna do the minimal amount to get everything gutted and done and painted? So, then what? Then you're just gonna rent those spaces out?
Yep. And as a matter of fact, we have, uh, two potential wedding clients right now and a, um, professional, uh, Potter art teacher who wants to come up from Alabama and teach later this year using that room. So, it'll be an art symposium that's renting from us.
So, that's off just first floor?
We're starting to get clientele before we can even bring it in.
Okay. How is, how is the city gonna deal with parking between River Rec and this group when there's just a too-small lot? Is there gonna be any, so free-for-all?
You have no plans to add parking?
No, I'm not saying adding it. I'm just saying using the existing.
I don't want to use street parking.
It'll have to be that way at this moment. I don't think that's a really huge impediment, and let me tell you why. We went to see the Opera House in Hollow, Michigan. They have no parking.
Okay.
They have no parking. They use street parking. They told us they could rent that main floor room out every day of the week if they wanted to. And last year, they turned a hundred thousand dollars income from that room.
So, this may maybe in the daytime?
I'm sorry?
What are the hours for the renting? Is it, because the River Rec Teen Zone's usually only in the afternoon, correct, Laura? That's...
And possibly at Santa Barbara.
It would be based on what the customer wanted. If the customer wanted, uh, let's say, an afternoon champagne or derve reception in that room, um, you know, from, from two to six. Uh, if somebody wanted a wedding that was at night by candlelight, that's, you know, what's your customer? I'd love to have, um, the City Commission meet in the room too. Because we could guarantee you a good sound system.
Are they gonna do parking, you said, on the street? But if there's new business coming in, doesn't the ordinance require them to provide so many parking places for each business that's there? The downtown is exempt, but the rest of the city isn't exempt. So, you'd have to go to ZBA and see if they would give you a, a variance on parking. In the ordinance.
Oh, one other thing too. I know you added in here about the siren equipment, but you also have to understand that wiring goes up and then the thing is on the roof in the other section of the building? So, is that gonna cover all that?
I, yeah, I didn't think anyone was gonna, I think I covered the, um...
Well, you covered the room.
We talked about that at the last meeting.
Yeah.
I think there was gonna be...
You added, you, you added in the first, your first...
It's locked all the time, right?
No, but I, I understand the room, but I'm just saying, the siren itself is on the other section of the building and then we have wiring going all to it. I just want to make sure none of it's hampered or if they get contractors in there, somebody could damage it, you know, we have to be careful. I don't even know if, you know, where the route is for all the wiring that goes up through there?
Well, we put, excludes the emergency siren equipment and the electrical room.
Okay.
I think it covers.
All right. Just want to make sure you think that's good.
Ms. Lovely, do we, do we resolve your, how did we resolve your issue with...
Uh, from the very beginning, uh, because of being under the commission, I've had nothing to do with the lease. This has been handled by other people. I don't even attend the meetings where it's discussed.
Are you, did you resign or, like, who resigned?
Uh, Terry did and Dave did. And I submitted a letter of non-participation.
That's why we have that letter, right?
Right.
Okay, all right.
According to our bylaws, if a president, uh, resigns or reaches the end of their term, they're still on the board. So, there was, you know, way for me to, to do that. But, uh, just some of the thing, things too. I had nothing to do with the lease, but I did participate in the business plan. And we did work with the EDC, uh, Mike Mancini. Um, and after he came in and saw the building and what we're working with, uh, he made us raise our expectations.
our expectations. He couldn't... And one of the things he's worked on is what they did with what used to be, what, Sperry's in Port Huron, which is a similar building, and he's very excited about in the plans. And there's really three legs here. There's what we can do now to start raising money, the use of that main floor. And then there is the big push for the total restoration, which is the $2 to $3 million prize that we're going to go after. And then after that is the post-reparation business plan. So this part that we're looking at now, as soon as, as soon as we get this lease, we've got three grant requests going out. Boom. But this piece has to be done first. And, you know, this allows that building to be repurposed and used and start taking it off the city's back.
Except for the exterior.
Yeah, well...
Which I think, for me, should go along with the package. I guess the only problem I have is I don't think I have everything here to support it at this point. I'd still like to see some more financial information before I could support it.
All right. Any other questions?
Just comment. I think it's fantastic because all I've heard for the last 12 years is, what's the city going to do with this building? Complaining that we vacated it. I felt under false pretenses, but can't prove it. And now we have two groups, excited about using the building, excited about restoring the building, raising money, outside money, to put into this building. I think it's fantastic. Finally can silence all the complainers then. And we, and we heard tonight that the city has no intention of reusing it for city office. I think it's fantastic. To turn this down would be silly. It really would. That's my comment.
I would urge you to vote to pass this tonight and let us go ahead with our grant application and our work with contractors. We've got everybody lined up. We are ready to go. What we need is this lease.
Any other questions or concerns on this lease? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
I'll qualify my vote. I don't have enough information, and I'm voting no.
Commissioner Fawcett.
No, and I want to see more on the ADA and the handicap, because I don't want the city to be stuck with a building that we're going to have to lease and then put handicap in for them.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
David Bosch.
Yes.
Mr. Hearn.
Moving on to beach parking. Mike Disson, yours.
Well, what do you think of it? Did you have all the parking's right away this time, too?
Yes.
I like the look of it. I think we had a couple of questions, though, on the gap between...
I got you, yeah.
The gap between the handicap and the diagonal parking on Pearl Street.
On the Pearl Street.
Is that mandated or...
There's a telephone pole there.
Oh. Oh, and a directional guide wire?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then...
It's shown in the picture.
Yeah, I didn't. I seen the dash, and I didn't know what it was.
No, it's hard to...
Yeah, that's not a...
I should have put my glasses on so I can read it. And then on the handicap accessibility for the bathrooms.
Right. That's what you have in front of the 25 feet there, that's not a parking spot. That's why, it's got to be left open for the handicap people to get in there.
Okay. But there is no parking at the bathrooms for handicap?
Yes. The one in front of that is going to be a handicap bathroom.
Okay, so the, directly in front of it, the only spot that's strictly a handicap?
Right. The one to the north. You got two spots there. You got a 25 footer.
Okay.
And then 12 five. That one's going to be a single handicap parking.
Okay. I did put my glasses on there. Any other questions on this so far? Yes, Lisa?
All right. I don't know how I can explain this.
Try it.
The section that you're doing in front of the existing pavilion?
Mm-hmm.
I know that the, one portion of existing sidewalk is, goes way over, and then the piece comes out, and then you're going to continue it. But my concern is, we have all those parking spaces there, and the problem you have is everybody's going to come in here, and you know they're going to cut right across here instead of having a sidewalk that was at the end, you know, similar like you had over here.
You're going to have the middle sidewalk still. That's only 18 feet up from the road. That's going to be there.
Yeah.
So people can use that to walk up.
But if I'm parking here, you know what they're going to do? They're going to cut right across.
Well, at the other end down there, we're headed, well, see where the proposed sidewalk is?
Yeah, this here.
Yes, so it's going to be handicap right up there also.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, all along here is where...
Then you got the one in front of the existing restrooms. You're going to have three ways to get in that pavilion.
I understand that.
Okay.
All I'm saying is, the habit forming of people, they'll park here and they'll cut across. Because there's no, there's no sidewalk right here to walk on to get to this, so they're just going to cut across the grass. And you're going to have a constant grass problem.
One thing that we had talked about doing there was putting in a rain garden. So that's something that would be native plants, and in essence, would be a barrier to walking there.
Where? Where, right along this edge?
Right in between where the, those six cars would park and the sidewalk.
So along here?
Yep.
So they're just going to walk through it? That's what's happened to the Broadway streetscape, let's face it. Nobody put something in the center. And what does everybody do? They park into one side and they cut right and walk right through it. It's nature, you know? So now you're going to put a whole bunch of plantings in here, and then everybody's going to... To me, I guess I just don't understand why it wasn't similar, which would allow people to walk on here and then...
Similar to what you have on the, on the Pearl Street side?
That's all.
The sidewalk you have along Pearl Street.
I just think you're going to have a lot of problems with that.
Well, there's going to be a sidewalk in front of the parking.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. On Pearl Street, there is.
Yes, on Pearl Street, there's going to be a sidewalk in front of the pavilion, too.
Right. She thought that would also be nice in front of the Pearl Street one, too.
Because it's just going to be difficult for people to park, and they're going to have strollers and stuff, and so there's nothing here to walk on except for the grass, which means they'll just, you know, just pointing it out, that's all.
I think the location of it is something that we can work...
We can, we can work something out and see what we can come up with.
Yes, Mr. Avery.
I mean, it, it does look like it would be better just to extend the sidewalk from the restroom past the end of the diagonal parking. I think that's a good point.
But the, the bad part is that one sidewalk is already there.
Well, it works.
Should just be adding one more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, if you want to add, okay.
Yeah.
We're, we're probably going to have like five feet between the engine parking and the sidewalk. And we're going to have to have bumper blocks in there for cars that can't get through there. So we'll come up with something and maybe take a look at it, see if you...
Because you got a lot of strollers, you got a lot of whatever, and they're all going to be trying to get the... Otherwise, they're going to come into the street, and then...
Well, that's, that's where the two-foot walkway in back of the cars, the three-foot walkway that we painted there, to, it isn't on this diagram, to get the people to get to the sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep them out of the street, but you know what I mean? You know how it gets down?
Also, that parking's deep enough that you wouldn't have to have them pull all the way to the front of the park, and they could actually then walk in front of that.
Yes. We can do either or. We can do it both ways. We got room that we can make it 22 feet deep and put the parking line four foot back.
Leave the asphalt?
Leave the asphalt for a walkway.
Good solution.
Yeah.
I would just, it'd be better to keep it on that side than the other side, just to keep them with all the kids and stuff away from the street. Other than that, looks good.
I'm putting that on my map, so I don't forget.
Please. And Mike, you, you ready to put this out for bid with our approval? And funding it?
Get a couple estimates first.
Okay.
And see where the funding is going to come from.
Okay.
Be cautious and then we're done.
Do you need a motion to approve this drawing? Would you like one?
Yes, I would like one. I would like also a motion for me to be able to go out and get estimates and come back to you and give you a report.
I'll make a motion to approve this with the correction, or whatever, however you want to do that.
Okay.
And allow him to go out for bids.
Are you going to go out for bids?
Or just, just...
You're just going to get guidelines, estimates?
Right, guideline estimates.
Bring it back, and then you'll go out for bids?
Right.
So we know the range.
So do we need to include that or not?
I would, I would not authorize the bid process.
So all we have to do is, I'll make the motion to approve this with the revision.
Support. Motion support. Any other questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Move on to the patrol car equipment purchase and installation. You're here this time.
Yes, sir, I apologize for the last name. I went on vacation mode and left my son's basketball game, and I forgot, so I apologize for that. But I'm here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And looking good.
Per the ordinance, I went out and obtained three sealed bids for the new patrol car that is on the way. If you notice in the bids that I presented, the lowball end, the one guy actually didn't even include one item I specifically asked for. Said for some reason, he couldn't bid that product out. I never called, never asked him why he did that. So I'm recommending going with Synergy Products. They're out of Troy, new company. It's going against who we currently use, which is Arrowhead. Arrowhead is kind of getting out of San Diego County. We initially brought them in. Their product and workmanship has kind of declined a little bit for a recent transition of a new ownership, new management. All the research that I've done, Synergy is a top-notch company, been in the market for several years, and with their bid coming in the lowest per the specs I presented, my recommendation was to go with Synergy.
So we can discuss it, I move that we accept the bid from Synergy Products Troy for $9,350.15.
Support. Motion support. And questions?
Is this the normal, all these things, are these the normal things, or are there additional things that are being added to this vehicle versus the other ones?
To be honest with you, this is the first patrol car I've actually spacked out. So with a lot of questions I threw out there to my mentors and peers, there are probably a little minor few things that I'm missing. I know the one big item, you know, we have talked about in the past, and the city manager and I have talked about, was something to prevent the idling of the patrol car. Couple weeks ago, I attended the Chiefs Winter Conference over in Grand Rapids, in which they had a vendor show. Walking around trying to find out my priority was to see what was out there to combat that issue. And Havus makes a product that's a charge guard where you can install it. You can shut your car off, but it'll leave certain items in your car, whatever hooked up to it, running. And when the battery of the patrol car drains to a certain point, it'll automatically start your car back up. I asked him the price on that, and he said it was about $185. So not included in that, I kind of figured that we would wait to get approval to get the equipment ordered, and then that would be an aftermarket price. So $185 wasn't going to make or break that bid.
But I mean, all these items that you have on here, is this the same stuff that you've put on all the other vehicles?
For the most part.
Except for the security storage?
Except for that storage.
Yeah, I looked that up, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you ever take anything off any of the other vehicles when we get rid of them?
We'll take the in-car video system out. We'll take the radio out, and we'll take the radar unit out.
But none of the other...
No, because it'll be a different vehicle, like the vicage. The prisoner cage in the back is only specific.
I'm looking at lighting, that's all I'm talking about.
We may be able to use a few lightings, but the lighting we have in there now is a DNR company that has since gone out of business. So if something were to break on it, we'd never be able to repair it and warranty it. So that's why I want it all brand-new with a new patrol car.
Okay.
Mr. Avery.
I was just going to mention that that battery protection device, it's not new technology. New motorhomes have this in it, so I mean, it's, it is approved.
Correct. I'm looking forward to it, because I've spent a lot of money on vehicle maintenance this year for the reason that our cars do sit idle quite a bit, so.
Any other question? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Fawcett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
David Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Thank you.
In case we have any questions on this traffic control.
Yeah, I'll just be back. For most of that, I'd like that was Mike's.
Not getting away that fast.
Hey, Mike, you want to explain that like you did to me at the city hall the other day? That made a lot of sense on this. Yeah?
Okay, what we have right now is three different traffic patrol orders on North and South Water. From Broadway to Pearl, it's no parking from 9:00 PM till 6:00 AM. And then you go through towns, no parking from 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Get that, past Bridge Street, it's no parking from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Just trying to unify the whole thing in the one order, so we don't have three traffic orders sitting out there. People are fishing longer, and, you know, if there was ever something going on, those people wouldn't be able to park at the pavilion to go fishing after 9:00 o'clock, or down by Holy Cross to go in there fishing, or anything like that.
So all this does is no parking from 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM down through the whole downtown?
Yep. From Pearl Street to South Main.
Okay.
And then the, the two-hour parking from 6:00 PM, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM will stay the same.
Do the whole town?
Nope, just from...
Just in that one section, still?
One block.
And is there any reason why you don't want to do more than just the one block?
Down, down, nope.
I'm just curious why we did one block and have the rest of them?
I have no idea why they did the one block. I don't know.
Any idea?
I'm going to go over my time, but my understanding is it has to do with the apartments and border patrol.
Yes.
Yeah, but border patrol parks in this section that's two-hour parking all day. So obviously, it doesn't affect them.
So that we can discuss this, we're supposed to have a motion on the floor, I move that we approve the issuance of Traffic Engineers order numbers P-18001 and P-18002.
Support. Any other questions on it? Would we, would it make sense to extend the two-hour, make more downtown a two-hour parking?
Most, most communities I go to during the summertime have two-hour only. I mean, I'm sure they don't totally enforce it if you're a little over, but I mean, most of them have like a two-hour to try to keep it rolling in there, you know? to try to keep it rolling in there, you know?
That's a separate issue from this.
No, it's in here.
Yeah. It's, uh...
One for the one block. All we're saying is should we be looking at the rest of it because, you know, why are we only doing one block?
Well, from a practical aspect, unless we have a meter made or somebody marking tires...
Well, I, I know they don't technically enforce them in those towns, but they try to keep people so they're not there all day.
I know it's a good idea, but we're trying to get rid of laws that we don't enforce.
Yeah, that's true. All right, any other questions?
I agree it should be that way, but if we can't enforce it...
Hearing none, that is a roll call vote?
Commissioner Fawcett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Now, we're moving on to Resolution Number 016-2018. Mariner Park and Michigan Department of Natural Resources Grant Resolution.
So this is something that we have been working on, I think we've had at a previous meeting, the plan for the sidewalk improvements at Mariner Park. There is a special coastal zone grant that has an earlier deadline than normal MDNR grants, which is Monday, March 5th. It's similar to the grant that we were originally planning on doing this for. It's due April 1st, it has a 50-50 match. However, with this coastal zone grant, it's a much smaller group of communities that are eligible for it. So in essence, it gives us a little bit better odds of being able to get a grant to pay for the project. With this tight deadline, I, I do apologize, we didn't think that we'd be able to have everything together and, and cost estimates and the grant application written in time. So that's why you're just getting this this evening. Approving this resolution in essence gives us the ability to apply for the grant. There are, is no obligation at this point to, if we get the grant, approve it. That's something that you can obviously consider at that later time, should we happen to get the grant. But at this point, all that it does is just authorize us to apply for the, uh, grant funding. And that's in the amount of $17,599. And the 50% match would come from recreation funds.
What's the sheet at the end with all the...
Uh, so one of the things with this grant is to put interpretive kiosks throughout the park. Those are the locations on, on the map for you. And these are potential things that we would be periodically placing in those kiosks and rotating them throughout the season.
So those are those little...
Yep, the five boxes.
So we can discuss, I move that we, uh, support the resolution for Mariner Park Shoreline Accessibility MDNR Grant.
Support. Motion support, any other questions on it? Does this want a roll call vote also or do you voice vote?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Fawcett.
Yes.
All right, moving on to financial business, disbursements including payroll of $277,008.19. Lovely.
Do you want to do that? Sure. I make a motion that we approve the expenditure of $277,008.19.
Support.
Questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Fawcett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
City managers report.
We've attended the Scott's Meeting, the Claire Department of Volunteer Dinner, and we had our bid opening for Mary Street Project today, two bid bids. I think the most was around $141. So we should have that at a future meeting for recommendation.
All right, any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, moving on to Commissioner Privilege.
Since it would seem more appropriate to be able to ask questions beforehand so we could, or make comments, but this is the way we do it. So I'm going to bring up a question and that is in regard to the possibility of getting that tall ship from Kenosha, Wisconsin. We evidently had tried last year for, uh, what, the Red Witch? And it sounded like a... I'm just curious as to whether there is any interest again in that.
He hasn't talked to me, he called a few times in the lab. He was more interested in moving the boat from the St. Clair, or the Jacob that he brought down for the Pumpkin Festival. He, uh, brought, he, that's what he keeps wanting to put down here. And, uh, I can touch base with him this week and see if he's moved on the Red Witch itself because he had some issues mechanically with it last year.
Oh, okay, no, I'm just curious, it sounded like a good thing. I can't think of anything else now. Thank you.
Are we going in order? Uh, I just wanted to again thank all of our first responders who are out in all this weather uh, here in Michigan. And also, as was stated before, anybody that is interested in Friends of City Hall, their finances, I again encourage you to go to friendsofcityhall.com. Everything is on there. Everything you ever wanted to know and were afraid to ask is on there. Also a Facebook page and so forth and so on. And, uh, that's it.
Commissioner Fawcett.
The weather's bad, so I'm just going to pass by.
Moving fast, yeah.
Nothing.
Well, just a comment, happy to see that common sense prevailed and that we passed this lease for the Friends of City Hall. Especially I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your voter support. That's it.
I don't have a whole lot. I'm, I'm just glad to have something done with the building. So we've got both ends hopefully taken care of now. It's just a step we need to take as a city. We just need to move forward. I don't have a whole lot. I'm hoping this is the end of the snow. I am done with it. Also, we have the Loma Races coming up, which is a good fundraiser for both the Washington Life Center and the Chamber also at, uh, let me see, Bankland Center in two weeks. Other than that, they get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry.